...for, that will help what has happened now because we don't have to stay at these values for four years. We will be able to reevaluate in two years, in 2027. So I think that's what we all about now.
Thank you, Mrs. Whitaker. Anyone from the Commission seek recognition? Commissioner Ward. Thank you. Where and how did this formula come about? Who wrote this formula about how we come up with these reappraisals?
The values?
Yes.
The values come from the sales that are in our area for last year. For 2024, the sales analysis is done by the Division of Property Assessments under the Comptroller, and then they are applied to our CANA system, which holds all of our records for each parcel.
Who had input on that? Is there anybody locally here that we have, the mayor, the financial director? Anybody in the county have any input on any of that? Does it all come from the state level?
That part does, yes.
Was there any type of education or information prior to the shock of getting a letter in the mail? I'm a county commissioner, that's how I found out about it. I laid the mail on the kitchen counter, opened it up, and it was wholly... I mean, so why was there not anything? I mean, Jason Muntire stood right there at that podium where you were. Zane Vanover asked me the question, "What should we do as a county to get out in front of this?" And he told us to either send out a mailer, try to inform citizens on how this is going to happen, what to be prepared for, the rate will go down, you know your appraisal went up. Why did we not do that?
The assessment change notice is the notice.
Would that be your responsibility to send that out, you know, education and information prior to? Or would that be the mayor, or the finance director, or who would that be?
I guess either one of us. When we had the ratio study two years ago, and we saw how far off our values were then, that's when this whole process really started. Was those values, that ratio gap, was showing where we were at that time?
I really feel like, and I'm not... I'm arguing that Sullivan County, not just you, but we dropped the ball in this case. We did not educate people in the county about what was about to happen, why it was happening, and I don't know who was asleep at the wheel, they were taking a nap when all that stuff came out. But, I mean, I kept it from my wife. She'd give me a butt-shooting. I had to sit down for almost an hour. I had to call friends here to help me explain it myself. And I'm still getting my butt-shoot. So, a little disappointed about how we handled this. We're better than this.
Well, I did in February put it on the county website. The letter about the reappraisal coming up, and the little video that they had showing here how it works. Washington County went through the same thing last year. It was almost identical to our value change. I know Rong County, Bradley County, Hamilton County, they're all doing their right now too. And their numbers are just like ours.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Whitaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Donna, the question I've been getting on the hall this present is, some folks is 50-60%, some folks are 90%, some folks are over 100%. What's the average appraisal rate countywide in this? What's average on that?
Well, if I tell an average, and you're above that average, you're going to have more heartburn than anybody else. And I'm skeptical to give that number. It's a lot more. Properties are different. If we make changes, if we discovered something that is added to your appraisal, there's all those variables that work with that appraisal.
County chairman, we should be open to people to say that. And if there is a... We need to tell them what it is. And that's the reason.
Okay, I'll tell you what it is.
Like Commissioner Ward said, it's complex to be...
I'm not trying to hide anything.
I'm not accusing anybody of doing anything. I just want to...
I'm just trying to cause less heartburn on it because it already is bad as it is.
That's a lieber... He asked a question, that's a lieber opportunity to answer. Ms. Whitaker.
The assessment for the county as a whole, that is residential, commercial, farm, industrial, everything as one whole, was 64%.
64%, okay.
And there was a decimal in there, but I thought I had everything down.
Okay. All right. And you feel like the timeframe of the state getting back with us on setting the text, like when the Comptroller's office, like if we win next week, or week after next, or...
They won't do it until we finish our hearings. Because it's still fluctuating with if people are getting things changed on their reappraisals.
So it could be the second week in May before we know what that number was. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Donna, thank you for coming. Is it possible for your office to put together a list of questions and answers, Q and As, that would allow people to go out there and comment questions that are being asked? And I know you're hearing those with some phone calls. But I think it would benefit a lot of people to either put a list of those together, and then they would have more information. And then I think the other thing, maybe this is in hindsight, but going forward, I think it would have been helpful if we had some county halls and allowed them to come in and preface a lot of this before they got it in the mail. So just going forward, I think that's the thing about it. I think communication is so essential to anything. And I think you have a lot of good answers, but we just need to get them published and put out there for people. So I appreciate if you can add. Thank you.
Commissioner Meads.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Donna, for being out here in the heat and coming into the fire. I know it's this event, this evening, but we've been getting the calls and things too, so I have to address those things. The first thing I wanted to say, I don't know if it's totally you, but just to say that our website is about 100 years old, and we have got to do something about it. And in the day of technology and information age that we're living in, this should not have happened. If the mailer's sure of it, I mean, we could have easily gotten something out, whether it be your side, or the finance side, whatever. And so, I agree with that. But the question I have is, what do you tell citizens who are telling or saying that their properties have done nothing but depreciate over the past four years? Other than, you know...
Not to come to the office and have a hearing?
Okay.
And state your case.
That's going to tell them. I just didn't know if there was anything else. And then the other thing was... The certified tax rate, when did you say that was going to be in?
It'll have to be after our hearings. Because if we're making changes on the values of our appraisals right now, they have to have a solid number to get that rate with.
All right. That's all I've got. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Ward. One more question. How does your department come up with a property's value? I mean, does your department go in person? Do you fly drones? Do you guess? I mean, do you look up on Zillow? How do you come up with that amount of some property? That's one question my wife wanted me to ask. I've got several written down here, so, you know, maybe I can get off the couch and I can get back my gun. So there's things I have to get cleared up, so...
Would you not have drones?
Okay.
We do use Zillow, my photo, and Realtor.com on sales. If there's been a sale on a house in the last couple of years, we can see inside of them. Because when somebody puts their house for sale, they want all the pictures on there, so we can see what is inside. Normally, we don't go in... Well, we don't go in homes. Once their construction is finished and they've moved in, we don't go in. We just stay outside and look for features outside. We have records that it does look at, and they compare it with the property to make sure we have everything checked, inventory, and listed. That's our job, is to list the things that are on the property.
About a house that you've never seen inside of? I've lived in my house for 28 years, never been for sales. How do you evaluate that?
Whatever it was when it started, the market changes that. We don't change it.
Right.
The only thing we change is the features.
You've got a hard job in it, explaining to a lot of very mad Sullivan County residents why they could... I own a 110%, so I'm not sure why. I like to be below that 60% myself. You got your work cut out for you. Commissioner Calhoun.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ms. Whitaker, for coming and helping us understand some of these questions from our constituents. But what is the deadline for you to make an appointment?
The Friday, 25th. We'll be taking calls next week, too.
So actually, 25th of... Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is what I was going to ask, to cut off the appeals. Can we give you enough time to give everybody a chance to appeal what they want?
Yes. We will still take calls next week, making hearing appointments. If we cannot get you in for a hearing, we can set you up on the county board, which starts June 6th.
Everybody will have a chance to have an appeal, thank you.
Commissioner Meads.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was a question I had. A constituent was saying that their appointment wasn't until May 5th. And so I just wanted to make sure that they were still going to be able to appeal after that meant that they could, even though the 25th was their deadline.
Our deadline to get you into the county board on June 2nd is May 20th. We have to give it 10 days. So, and anything after that, we can still schedule throughout the month of June. We have 30 days to do a council.
Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One more question. Sorry, Donna. So I thought that when, and you did come before the commission before, that I would call the mention of drones. I thought it was so... You wouldn't have to add personnel because you'd be doing these more frequently, so...
Now, what we purchased was aerial photography. And that was done by planes. It was not done by drones. And we do have that, and we are using it, and it is working with the hearings because people can see that. We can see the property that way as well. And if there's some obstruction, which this new imagery is very good. It's clear. We can see all four sides of the houses, whatever's there. It is working very well. But yes, that was not a drone. It was still...
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Ward. The board. Two sets on that board.
There are five gentlemen on the board. They are chosen by... We have two that are chosen for Sullivan County by Mayor Vanover. We have two from Kingsport, chosen by the mayor in Kingsport. And we have one from Bristol, chosen by their mayor.
Is that public record? Who's on that board?
I don't give that out because we don't choose them, but you can reach out to the mayors to get their name.
Thank you. Commissioner Crawford.
Thank you, Chairman. Is all of the appeals going to be done here in Blountle? Or are you going to try to set up other areas?
Right now, we just have them here in the offices.
In the office, okay.
Commissioner King.
Thank you. I had a question from a constituent of mine. He's got a appeals appointment. And he said, "What do I need to bring to that to help my case?" And can you give us some ideas of what he needs to bring, or what they need to do to, when they come in and sit down and say, "Other than my appraisal's way too high", you know, what can you do? Can you have something that, like another appraisal or something like that, that, you know, you could bring with you?
If you have a fee appraisal that is less than three years old, we can use those because that's in our four-year cycle. Any features that you have to prove what your claim is, we can use those. I mean, anything that you can show us that... What your claim is. I mean, just to say your assessment's too high. We just need proof of what you're seeing that we don't.
Right. Let's say, for instance, you had, you know, this ground, pasture land, farmland land, that kind of stuff. Is there anything there that you could bring or use or to help?
You don't really get appraisals on just land that often. We use the video, I mean, the images. We can look at the images with them, and if they tell us they've got some stuff they can't use, some area they can't use, we can take a percentage off of that way. But the land sales, vacant sales last year is what drove those land sales that are vacant. I mean, the land that is vacant now to those appraisals.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Whitaker.
This is my last question. April 25th, if you're still, by that time, if you're still getting a bunch of calls, a bunch of volume of calls, are you going to extend that a bit longer?
We will.
Okay. So if you're for the taxpayers, if you're still getting a volume of calls and you're coming in, you're going to extend that one, okay?
Yes, we will go up until next time if we have to. But we have to cut off at that point. But at that point, we can schedule them with the county board. We would just miss the informal hearing with our field people and go straight to the county board.
Okay. Thanks. Commissioner Meads.
Mr. Chairman, okay, this is my last question, too. Criteria for a person, you're elected, but you're assessor in your department. What is the criteria for them to be an assessor? Is it their training, or what do they have to do to be able to be qualified to say this person's property is worth this amount of money? What makes them be able to do that?
Well, like I said, we have their record. And we can choose, I don't know how to explain it, but other than a 1,500 square foot house that is like a ranch house, doesn't have a lot of architecture or anything, we call those O1s. And they're priced differently because they're just a straight house. We have, the next level is an O3 with architecture, more ceiling, I mean, more roof lines and cuts, and, you know, the cost more to build. But our assessors, since I've been in office, have been trained with the Division of Property Assessments and its IAAO, which is International Association of Assessment Officers. They have training classes. So they take assessment law class, they take fundamentals of appraisals, they take basic mapping, and they take, it's called IAAO, one-on-one, and it goes deeper into how to do an appraisal. And all of them, but one has finished that first level.
I guess the concern is, some citizens are concerned that their property were being biased, that they were being, you know, maybe the person was biased against them for some particular reason. But you're saying that each person has the same training, and they have to have that same work to go into that assessment.
And I have very many meetings with them, that we take an oath to be uniform and equal to everyone. And the uniformity is the biggest thing that we've had to work with, was making sure that these houses were called the right code, so they weren't overpriced. And the land was equal to your neighbor's land. We just had some that were two lots side-by-side, one at 50% total on it. So that's a less value. So we've worked real hard to clear all that up and clean it up. And it's not 100% we're still working.
Ms. Whitaker, I'll give you the final word. Any closing comments you wish, Mike?
I will say about the two-year reappraisal that I'm a little excited about because it's going to eliminate a lot of this that's going on. Because the shorter period will not allow that gap to get so large. The other thing is something that really broke my heart the last time, was the tax relief for those who are elderly, and they get that tax relief. That ratio study cut that out for them. It didn't cut it all out, but it cut a chunk of it out. So this two-year reappraisal will eliminate that happening ever again. And we are working very hard to help people not be... I mean, I know everyone's upset, and I would be too. I mean, if I didn't know what was going on, I know it would be... But if I was not in the office and I didn't understand it, I know it would be a...
Thank you for being here with us. Thank you very much. Next, Networks' quarterly report, David Walker.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This evening, rather than just review what you've already read that we emailed out on our quarterly report, I just want to touch on a couple of things, and then introduce those to you who don't know, or Director of Economic Development, Michael Parker. And specifically, I admit that we've been working a great deal on, and a lot of it, which is land development. And a lot of our projects are coming to crucial points of development, which y'all support it, and I think it's good to do a brief overview of that and a little bit of give the guy. I do want to remind you one thing that was in the report. If you're interested and haven't registered, please do. For our Foreign Trade Zone lunch and learn, I say ours. It's actually hosted by Tri-Cities Airport. They are the administrators of Foreign Trade Zone 204, which is a great economic development tool, and becoming especially important in pretty much on people's trade are with the tariffs that have been going on and change. Probably going to be different by the time I walk out, and I be all used about tariffs. I want to point out, before I let Michael come up here, that there's been some confusion for some folks in recent months. It's come to my attention about just what it means for property owned by ETS, or property owned by one of our city partners, or property owned by Networks, and how they're all treated. And to get right to the point, they're all treated exactly the same. We're not, part of the formation of Networks and our partner-owned properties was to get rid of internal battles within the county that are kind of silly and really detrimental to economic development. ROI is not in land sales per se, although there's nothing wrong with making money on land sales. But it's, they're publicly funded because private development, you sell land, and you either lost money, you gained money, and that's ended your deal. But public economic development is about the revenues and the benefit of the jobs that are created as a result of those projects. When we get these grants that Michael's going to touch on, and we develop these properties, it doesn't matter who owns it. In fact, our multiple ownership and multiple grant applicants, it's all handled the same network space, the same role to each of them. But through state programs, TDA programs, many of these grant programs, you can only have one grant going at one time. And we have multiple grants. And that's because one might be a ETS grant that was still handled by the same team in the same way. One could be in City Bristol, one in City Kingsport. One could be through Networks in Sullivan County. And so the names on the grants and the owners of the properties, it's still an asset to the county, and we still look at them as our canvas to try to recruit and provide jobs concerning one priority. So I'm going to turn it over. Michael Parker, actually, has been with Networks longer than I have. And he truly is, he's an IEDC certified economic developer. We're very proud, and I'm very proud, of the work that he does for us every day. And so, at any rate, I'd like to turn it over to him, Michael. Kind of do a quick overview of our properties and properties of our partners that we're working on various stages of development.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Michael Parker. Hopefully, we have a presentation. So I'm just going to talk to you about the Networks owned properties, as well as some of our partner properties, and where we stand in the development of each of those. Since we created Networks in 2004/2005, Networks, Sullivan County, purchased three industrial parks near, so it's briefly named Partnership Park 1, 2, and 3. So we're going to start Partnership Park 1. This is located in Blountle, right across Monday Deep Road from the Tri-Cities Airport. The next slide will give you a good representation of where it's at there. So you can see the outline of the park itself, the existing tenants, FedEx rates here as USA. You might have heard FedEx rates closing. We're in the process of assisting and marketing that building. And additionally, the rest of the land acreage has been sold to today's holiday housing development. It's about a 55-acre development this board approved, as well as a reselling board. It'll produce about 95 housing units, and that's currently under construction. So we look forward to that, and you can see those out there right now. Partnership Park 2, this is our largest park. This is located off Highway 394 in Bristol. It says Blountle, but it's in Bristol. It's 204 acres. The next slide will give you an idea of what that looks like there. We recently developed and improved Lot 4, which is in the Seaman Corporation site there. It's a little over $4 million project. We actually sold that site to Seaman Corporation before we completed grading activities on there. So that's a, that's a great hit there. Currently, we're working to improve Lot 2. We actually have an active grant with the state for $1 million to improve that site. We're anticipating, actually bids are open right now. We have a pre-bid conference here, about a week and a half, at our office to review those with our interested parties, and look forward to getting that underway this summer. So that'll be about a $2.5 million project. We grade about 32 acres and produce a pad for about $300 square of the building. Hopefully, we can sell that and locate a tenant there before we pre-grading activities, much like we've done in the previous land sales or land related activities. Next slide there, that's a good site of the Seaman Corporation site that I just referenced. And we graded that site. The GCL together is 50 acres. That includes the recent detention pond that was constructed for the park, as well as their 35 roughly acre site itself. We'll do the next slide. We have one more over here. So Partnership Park 2 Lot 2, they are currently working, like I said, this is a site that'll be graded. It'll be completely on a 2% grade, pad rate, or market grade, as we say, with an internal detention pond specific to that site. So that'll be great in order class that we hope to locate an industrial tenant here in the next 12 to 18 months. Partnership Park 3, this was purchased in Kingsport, right at the intersection of I-81, I-26. FedEx Ground facility is located out there. The next slide will give you a good representation of what that looks like. So FedEx Ground, Palmex, food group, Lamar advertising, GS infiltration, all located out there. Networks only owns about 48 acres, but only one of those 8 acres, 1.5 is the other. The other, well over 7 acres, right, 7 acres is in Flood Plain, Detention Pond area, with the Northeast Insulin Gas line also already there. So we're marketing 1.5 acre site there. That would be a good complement for a commercial type industry. I'd love to bring to it, to reconsider.
Before you, can you go back to that question?
I can.
Where the corner in the red line is, that piece of property down from that pole sack is actually privately owned. But that's the site we're looking at, and I think we're real hopeful that that's where we will be. real hopeful that that's where we will be placing a state veterans home. That housing development on the left side, that person owns that piece of property and he's also looking at the entrance to that on the upper right, possibly another housing development in there. Just so y'all know what we're looking at for the state veterans home, which if we get that, that's high-paying jobs. That's where I want to take my time, but.
Mr. Parker? Appreciate that, Sam. To that point, you can see there's still development opportunities within this park, large-scale industrial, those kind of often taken here through the acreage available and the site configuration. Airport Parkway site, this is our newest site we purchased this past year. This is located on Airport Parkway. The next slide will give you a good area of where this is. This is exit sixty-three between the airport and interstate there, right adjacent to Claire Foods. The next slide will give you an aerial of the property. Again, it's forty-one acres. Lead plans developed as much like we had in those other properties, Partnership Park two specifically, we'll grade and improve that. The next slide will give you an idea of what we hope to accomplish there. So we hope to approach the state or deliver some additional grant dollars this fall with this project. This would be about a three point four million dollar project to produce two pad ready sites or two market sites that we can hopefully create some future industrial tenants. Great, great assets, but a great location next to the interstate on the airport. Aerospace Park, I'm sure you all can read it, Aerospace Park. This is the hundred and sixty acre industrial park attached to the airport itself. Networks works with the airport to market this site and we brought on Jones on the South JLL to help us in that endeavor. And the group we're working on here is locating and identifying a national developer that can really use their capital to do vertical versus moving inward to our communities to really build that asset. So we're really deep into that right now. I just returned to the North America Trade Show, which is our premier trade show specific to this site that really focuses on the type of industries we hope to recruit here. The next slide will give you an idea of what this site could be. It's its current configuration. It's around hundred and sixty acres minus the detention ponds and other ways there. The next slide will give you the master plan for that. This is an inverse image of the last one. As you can see, it's a mixed group development, targeting both, you know, small regional just, those are some large body, live body aircraft, maintenance repair and overhaul operations. One thing specific to this site is that pretty much tenants at this site cannot own a facility. This is a federally owned site, so it's only land, long-term land lease. Furthermore, you have to have a need to be there. You can't just locate the airport because you like the idea of being there. You will need the runway as an asset as part of your operations in order to locate all airport property. Plans or anything like that?
I would like to add that bringing JLL was somebody, Michael, Michael came across the consultant David Lotterer, who is target market specialist for that renowned firm at Lamar Americas two years ago. And that partnership has really progressed our efforts in that park. We recently had five meetings with prospective national developers to go vertical with some buildings there and gave us a great deal of optimism. I want to talk about on all these parks developments and what Michael alluded to on the grants is that we, when we go, you know, March Madness just ended, I'll use the little example of Jimmy Galvano in that nineteen eighty-three NC State run, a new practice that would spend time practicing cutting down nets and that positive. We plan to achieve these grants and we keep, we have a very high batting average at getting the state. Most of these projects where we put our money in, the state has a million dollars match on all of these. Remember, the first site, the site Seaman Corporation purchased was the first high-end pack site craft because of the rail of a million dollars that state ate at even as they keep increasing and they're increasing their grant participation even more now. And we hope that that Airport Parkway site that we recently developed, it is a landmark of KDB, we're hoping to get a date five percent of that funded by the state. That's our government. And so that's why it might take a little longer to develop that, but we'd rather use the state's money. We use our own to develop and come back to you for that. And I think to Michael's point, that's so many property, three of the last four sites on which we received state assistance, we sold before we were done with the earthquake. And that track record is what I think is going to lead to us continuing to get these grants from the state.
Yeah, I'm not going to go into depth on these other parks here. There's several other industrial parks throughout Sullivan County and even into Hawkins County and Kingsport City limits and you can see on my list here. Some of these parks do have active grants that we're working on improvements or in, you know, site improvement projects. Currently, Bristol Industrial Park in partnership with ETS and Bristol South, we actually are a grant holder for ETS property, Bristol South, which is a potential industrial property we're looking at that developing pretty much adjacent to the Bristol industrial park there. So to play his point that the grant for these developments may be awarded to a variety of organizations, IDBs or EDCs or whatever have you, but they're all kind of running through the Networks central office and just kind of point those to where they're funded through and it's kind of a pass-through the Networks needs to charge on. If there's any questions, do you can see those other parks in the surroundings there and there is, there's a missed level of opportunity for development. Some of those are completely cool, some of those have barriers to development such as overstructure or it's a property issue. Any questions I may answer?
Recognize Commissioner Mays.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a question. Why do you networks work with the Tri-Cities Airport to try to bring in more airlines here locally?
Again, we've gone over this a lot of times. We were never asked to by the airport. It's simple as that. When we found out about it, when we found out about it?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone seek recognition? Commissioner Cole?
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Parker, you said something interesting. You said FedEx rate in the blow. You say it's closing?
Yes, sir. Mike talked about more Elko, maybe he's talking about the one. No, actually, I'm glad you brought that up. I want to address it because again, it closed, but that was not just a loss of those jobs. It was enough. FedEx either offered retirement buyouts from employees that did not want to transfer over, but everyone who wanted to transfer over went to the other FedEx facility that Michael showed you in Gateway Commerce Park. So it was just a decision that's going on corporate ride with FedEx. Logistics is a really tricky and ever-changing industry sector and so they closed many of their smaller just cross-stop facilities and went to the largest, larger distribution centers. So they just relocated those jobs to the one in Gateway Commerce Park, which is great because there's no loss of jobs, but now we have a very nice cross-stop facility.
Thank you. Very nice to meet your candidate.
Thank you, Chairman. Anyone else? On Holly Road, you sold that property and it's residential. How does that develop jobs for the future?
Well, we have to remain flexible and, you know, plans are often changed, especially in economic development. That park was purchased with the strategy of a bypass road going through there that never developed. I mean, that was twenty-five years ago that it was developed. The land top notch from a topographic standpoint is challenging, but we, that's not what held it up because every property you buy has topographic challenges. But the lack of clear, of really good industrial access roads without the bypass going through made that a very unmarketable industrial site. Had the bypass gone through, we wouldn't have made that decision. So it presented a great opportunity and with the housing shortage that we faced in recent years, when the developer came with the opportunity, we entertained it and we closed on the phase three of that. We're developing good houses that are at a critical price point for our, for our needs and it was a decision-making, the deficit veggies of the property already could have sat there for decades if we didn't get a major expense in highway improvement. It could have sat there for a long, long time before it would really attract an industry.
With the money you made off of that property, are you looking to invest it in somewhere else?
Well, not per se the money, other than that free zone money, but that goes to pay debt on the bonds to fund it, yes.
Right.
So it will lead to that, yes, sir. We are always looking for other property. You can see with the partners, this appears to be a lot of property, but again, we're reviewing like seven nice sites in other communities that don't face similar development, land development challenges to we are, are doing seven industrial parks at a time. But that's just something that because of the commitment of this body, the commitment of our city partners, as well as partnership that this networks and working with the other economic developers, we're able to at least keep up the best we can with what other communities are doing.
Well, that property you bought on, that we bought on Holly Road, what, twenty-five years ago, you ought to make some pretty good money off of that to spend on your bonds.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, it's, I just, you know, you, we had land that we could sell and then you put it in the residential, but then we haven't opened up anything else really that we can go out here and offer people. We've got it, but how much of it is shovel ready?
Well, Michael just went over, Commissioner, we're doing a three million dollar project in Partnership Park two, about a three million dollar line side on Airport Parkway property and we're continuing to look for more property. I mean, we, we are currently managing how many millions of dollars in grants with our four million dollars in grants between us or partners on property development. Again, some of that is, there are two sites owned by ETS that we are assisting with on that development. So I mean, we're as much property as we can develop as we're looking to develop. We're on the same page on that.
But you're, you're saying that you're looking for grants, you're waiting on grants to come through and grants may be took three years down the road and, you know, somebody wants to come in and build something, you're too late on them.
Well, as we develop the plans, we develop the grants and we're really, the grants, for example, the land we just bought Airport Parkway, that grant goes, that grant process starts in August. So that's the only delay is from today to August. And I think for eighty-five percent of three million dollars, that that's time well spent in pursuing eighty-five percent for the state to do it. I mean, we could, we could come before partners and try to get, I mean, it costs us tens of millions of dollars to develop this land. And, you know, I mean, I, I just think doing it and being a steward, it is a balance to be stewards of the money. But we put a lot of money purchasing that land and the engineering cost we've spent on that land. And, but I mean, for it to date, you know, I think sometimes three million dollars to develop a thirty acre site, we need that assistance in order to get any kind of ROI on that property.
Let me ask you one other question. On the Partnership Park there in Bristol, when that was, when we bought the land and everything, all I heard was the rail, that the rail was, you know, crucial to that park and this one. Is there anybody connected with a rail system going by or putting something on there?
Yeah, we announced in July, Seaman Corporation bought that property, thirty-five acres, specifically because of Ask Rail. And they're in the plans I communicated with the CEO of Seamans just last week. They aren't planning any development, but, you know, again, with the tariffs, the supply chain of getting buildings is delayed a lot of construction. But that land is sold, the rail site was sold to Seaman Corporation.
What are they going to do with the rail? What, are they shipping out? Is that what they're doing with it or?
There's products coming in and out, I believe, I know that, yeah.
All right, all right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else seek recognition? Mr. Walker, I'll give you the final word.
But again, we just thank you all so much for your support. It is a lot and developing land here is a challenge and we couldn't do it without the partnership that we have with you and our cities and the proactive thinking that this body has shown, we appreciate it. So again, I hope everybody has a wonderful good Friday tomorrow and a happy Easter. And any questions, anytime you're wondering what's going on with this, my act of trust to be up here. Many of you come to our meetings, we're thrilled. We'd like to see more of these, like, come to our monthly meetings or just stop at office. Thank you all very much for all you do here.
Next, I'd like to invite Chief Devey Tracy to trail on behalf of Sullivan County Sheriff's Office, fallen Officer Memorial. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Professor. Trying to make this brief. Near and dear to our hearts, on behalf of Sheriff Cassidy, so, hey, sir, thank you for allowing us a little time to present this invitation to you guys. It's a twenty twenty-five first responders memorial. I know it says Tri-Cities Memorial, which is by Johnson City, but it is Sullivan County, Bristol and Kingsport. Trying to explain this, we've been working on this for about a year. This is a living, lived year for us and in three years, this is likely the first year for twenty twenty-eight. So right now, a three-year, it's going to be a big, big occasion, that's what. First event's going to be held at Benedict Convention Center, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at five P.M. If you plan on attending, I would suggest getting there about before. We'll be hosting families represented by Kingsport Police Department, Bristol Police Department, of course, our own. This means it was total of twenty-two families representing the combined total of twenty-two fallen heroes. These agencies will be in attendance and participate. There will be meals provided this year at no cost and catered by the Meadows Restaurant, excellent staff there. If you eat there, so you already know how excellent that food is. So consider it's a formal invitation from on behalf of Sheriff Cassidy, myself and just four chairs, you're here in spirit of community, brotherhood and special relationships that transcends jurisdiction, families. We're anticipating approximately three hundred plus guests so far. These will include city mayors, vice mayors, city managers, aldermen from each city, county judges, their staff, the media, probably be four tables of media there because they know this is going to turn into something big. There will be also the organizations from outside of our region. We got dignitaries coming from Nashville, state and federal level. This includes veterans associations and organizations with members who act participants of this ceremony as speakers. Now, if you wondered why we're mixing veterans with first responders, well, we got south of thirty veterans amongst our first responders across the board, current active military, near and dear to our heart. Some of you already know how I have a deep love and esteem for them, with a father serving Vietnam and my son, both of them injured. So I've got a whole lot of mentors that I'm crazy about, my assistant chief, Greg Simcox, Afghanistan vet. So I'll leave it there with you to sit on your own and see while we're putting that together, very important. We have three musical acts, including Miss Carla Carson, I know you all, you've been to the chamber dinner, you already heard, you know, that little lady's got a full spirit in this room. Philipson Banks, you've heard her and Captain Joey Strickler in company, he's had a song recorded specifically for us and first responders across, you know, America. Got to touch upon one more thing about as far as that, so the last meeting that the chamber myself had and sitting down with the chair, there were nineteen deaths across America. Six of those deaths were current military members, so serving double duty. So I wanted to go back and say that, mention that because to put in emphasis on double duty there. When these, when these soldiers decide that they need to go and do extra training outside of what they've been called up to do, you know, it's our duty to stand. of what they've been called up to do, you know, it's our duty to stand by and support them. Some of us are jealous of them. I got on SWAT team because I was jealous of the military. That's the closest I could get, so, so you kind of understand that. Along with that, our keynote speaker at this event is going to be Knox County Mayor Glenn Jacobs. Some of you have heard him speak before. You know, he's a dynamic speaker. You know how big he is. Some of you know who he was before. He becomes Knox County's mayor. Guest speaker is Senator Bobby Hershberger. We have checked in to see if Diane's going to come. I'm pretty sure she will. She, if you remember those two, those of you who attended, she was our guest speaker last year at our last event. Other speakers will include Miles Bernard, Marine veteran, known well, Kingsport Mayor Paul Montgomery, Commissioner Gary Stidham, native veteran, known well, Blood City Town Manager, Michelle Roberts, who's right back here, native veteran, District Attorney, General Barry Stavas, TBI Director David Roush, Ms. Tabitha Moore with Bethel University. There's some things in store that she's wanting to talk about there. Colonel Matt Perry's coming up from Nashville also. I'm not sure about the commissioner, but he's going to send a word about how he feels about all of us coming together, public service. So, with all that being said, you know, what's the goal, you probably would ask me? Well, I mean, primarily to embrace those, those twenty-two families across Southern County, Kingsport, Bristol. I mean, if you can imagine, even the ones whose, whose families are, there's some people who are not represented by families because it's been so long. Kingsport, it's been a long time since they lost. Bristol, Mark Vance, little Mark Vance. I call him little Mark Vance because he was once an explorer with us when he was about that tall, you know, and then he ends up being in Bristol, unfortunately lost. And so, to some of us that, that knew these people, this is a, it's a deep, deep scar. I didn't know Hubert Webb, but when I think about Hubert Webb, it's like an uncle, if you understand what I'm saying. So, I know you guys, I know you guys understand this and, and will support this. So, we're trying to keep some unspoken promises to, to the memory of these, these officers. And that's why we got twenty officers that show up to Josh Stewart's son, Jackson, when he's playing softball, baseball. That's why we're there with Grace when she's having her little dances in, in events. That's why we're taking little Steve, grandson of Steve Nagle, Carolyn Crabtree. He loves trains, so Carolyn Crabtree took him out to the trains. And this is an ongoing thing we're conducting maintenance here. So, in three years, twenty twenty-eight, like I said, this is, twenty twenty-five is the fledgeman year. Twenty twenty-eight, we're expecting this to evolve into something big. The sheriff and I have a passion. Those members back there, Kingsport Chamber, we're all, we're all tracking the same way. And that is to also recognize not only our fallen, but our department, EMS, military, killed in action from Southern County. We're going to make sure that, that we can get roll calls and for everybody we can round up in this. And the reason for that is, is we got a brotherhood and some relationships that need maintenance. We drift apart. Everybody comes together when we have a tragedy for about three months. We're all warm and fuzzy. And we got to stop that, and, and we want to stop that. And we want to, we want to lead the way to trying to put all that together. So, you know, we're going to have D E O C. Even, even if it's a D C S caseworker who died while they were serving someone, we're going to recognize them because we owe them. And so, I'm hoping we're going to be able to show them as first responders, members of the military, and you guys, the leadership of this county, and the cities and there's them side by side so they can see that, that we're working together in unity under one roof as one family. So, this is your invitation, and I would like to ask members of the Chamber to step up here if they, it's been a long day, everybody's tired, so, but I don't want you to miss Miles.
Mr. Furbin, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We had a meet with Chief Contral today, and she might imagine, went quite long. And he asked me to say a few words, and since he's a lot bigger than me, he's got five stars on his shoulder, I know how to take orders. But my remarks will be much briefer than him, which is easy to do.
This is short.
Okay, it's called a shortcut. Thanks. When, when the chief sent me an email about a month ago, I was honored and humbled by the fact that he wanted us to be involved. And so, I quickly sent it out to our leadership team, and every single one of them jumped at the opportunity to get involved, to participate. And two of them are right here, and he goes, I can't do much, but I do hire good people. Phil's standing up back there, asking a call. So, these are the two leading it. These are the two that are leading it from the Chamber's perspective. And I want to add to the goals that the chief set. We want to raise more money than just to pay for the dinner. Because we want to issue checks like we did when some of you participated in the event, when we endorsed Governor Lee's, like the Tennessee. And we raised enough money to give checks to all of the EMS, police, Sheriff's Department at the end of that event. So, we're going to do the same thing. And so, we'll be asking a lot of people for a lot of money, and the more we make, the more we take in, the more profit we have, the more checks, more amounts we'll be able to get to everybody else. So, thank you. Any questions?
Anyone seek recognition? Anyone at all?
Good, I'm ready to go home.
I'd like to, I'd like to thank all of you for being here with us, so, thank you. Before I move on to the approval of, of meeting minutes, there's been a few people come in since I announced it earlier. We do have a public comment signup sheet. It's separated into two parts, agenda related and non-agenda related. So, if you've come in since I made that announcement, you can sign up for either one of those. It's over here to the, to my right at the door there. Next order is approval of meeting minutes, March two thousand twenty-five, March thirteenth and March twentieth. Any discussion on the approval of the meeting minutes? Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Vanover, second by Commissioner Means. Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on the approval of the meetings. Gardener votes yes. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two yes, three, two axent.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, minutes are approved. Next order, approval of notaries. Madam Clerk, we have a list of notaries. Madam Clerk?
Amber N. Banks, Nikki R. Beadle, Jr., Donna Gorges, Linda S. Brown, Lisa M. Christian, Ashley A. Clifford, Hannah Marie Dillard, Jennifer Drozinski, Sarah Dugger, Christina Michelle Fleming, Randall Leon Gibson, Pamela A. Gibson, Connie Mae Griffin, Rebecca Glenn Halbrook, Nicholas P. Hopkins, Lisa T. Warren, J. House, Brianna Hughes, Anita D. Jantsch, Karen Renee Jenkins, Ella Annette Kane, Ashley Kendrick, James Kennison, Amanda Ketchen, Jessica M. King, Renee Clendike, Crystal Coke Lenny, Daniel Leathers, Deborah Lynn Littleton, Laura Blizzard McMillan, Vicki L. Moody, B. Kevin Moody, Brandon Lee Morgan, Reuben Michelle Music, Celestine D. Myers, Kyle Pope II, Janaye B. Porter, Sheila Postel, Kimberly Dawn Roden, Joshua Vance Sadler, Ryan Thomas Sallier, Angela Scott, Abigail Taylor Sheets, Brianna Starnes, Amy Taylor, Carolyn Thomas, Sheila P. Walters, Rebecca Wheelock, Connie Widner.
You've heard the list. Is there any discussion on the notaries as presented? Any motion? Motion to approve by Commissioner Means, second by Commissioner Crawford. Any further discussion on the approval of notaries? Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on the approval of notaries. Gardener votes yes. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two yes, two axent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, notaries are approved. Without objection, next order is public comment. We will enter into recess for the purpose of public, public comment. First order will be public comment on agenda-related items. Anyone, any good opportunity to sign up, please sign it? Before I begin, each speaker is requested to state their name and address for the clerk's electronic record. Though this is not question answered, clarifying questions may be permitted. No speaker can transfer or yield time to another speaker. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes uninterrupted, and is asked to direct all comments to the Chair of the Body and not members. At the end of the three minutes, I will let you know and ask you to make your final statement. First, I'd like to re, I recognize Chuck Carter.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come speak. Chuck Carter, four fifty-five, West Southern Street, Kingsport, Tennessee. First thing I'd like to say is thank you for recognizing our, our teachers and principal and supervisor of the year. Just briefly, briefly is not doing them justice, but going over those, they are entitled to move on to the next level and represent our region, and then eventually represent the state of Tennessee in those endeavors. And I would just like to say with Karen Dean in the elementary, Ms. Dean is instrumental in working for creating opportunities for all of our students to gain that foundational skills in reading and math, and very creative in, in helping our students. And we did a big initiative in Southern County, and now that, there's a team from Rock Springs Elementary that's going across East Tennessee and even down to Nashville to train others about recognizing the characteristics of dyslexia for, for students in their classroom, which has not been on the, on the spotlight here in Tennessee for decades, and now it's gaining a lot of attention. So, very proud, Ms. Dean. Next, Sheriff Wyatt, thirty-eight years of service. That says enough along, but today, she's just as energetic and just as passionate about education as she was thirty-eight years ago. I wasn't here thirty-eight years ago, but that's what I've been told, is that Ms. Wyatt is on fire and still on fire like she always had been. In high school, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Harrison does so much for our students beyond the classroom in supporting our students, teaches Spanish, but does so much more about teaching students about life. And he's actually up for a Bull Ride Scholarship. I hope he has the opportunity to potentially be recognized for that, and also going on as well for the State Teacher of the Year. Principal Leader, Mike Wilson, got the award for the National Blue Ribbon. So, Miller Prairie is one of the top schools in not only the state of Tennessee, but across the country. So, and then Ms. Buckles, she could not be here this evening, but what Ms. Buckles does each and every day in so many different ball hats that she wears and, and leadership that she provides, we, we really have a big debt to say thank you to Ms. Buckles. So, I want to make sure, recognize them. Clay Walker, just real quick, with the industrial expansion, one of our jobs is that workforce and education partnership. Proud to see more businesses and industries coming to Southern County. We work with over a hundred partners right now in our schools with workplace funding. So, the more, the more we can get, the more opportunities for our students. We appreciate that. And then finally, just on behalf of support for our nonprofits, I, I would be amiss if I didn't say, we really appreciate the work that St. Food Arms Bank does to provide those backpacks for weekends and summers for our students. Big service to, to our students in that area. And then also to the Children's Advocacy Center for the support they give to our students who call in and to abuse. So, I, any partner's words with us, I at least have to feel like I have to say, we appreciate what they do, and we feel like they, they do a valuable service to our students in Southern County. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Victoria Hunt.
Actually, I have a, I'm good.
Name, name and address, please.
Victoria Hunt, forty-two fifty-seven Rockhold Road. As far as agenda-related items, I don't know. I'm sorry, I'm on number one tonight again. I would question if you were a board member on any nonprofit organization, would that be a conflict of interest if you voted on number one tonight? So, ASOF once said, "We hang the petty thieves and appoint the great ones to public office." I think many in our county, including some of our commissioners, may feel that after our new assessments. This is not my first time coming to the county commission meetings. I've been here nearly every month since October of twenty twenty-four, by Blanche Earl's heart. Political interest took, our politics took interest in me when it involved my family's farm. The county's planning and zoning office proposal overlaid without adequate knowledge to over eight thousand parcel owners. It would affect because, without, without adequate knowledge, because, quote, "They didn't have the financial resources to mail something to every property owner along the river." This time, every property owner knows what is coming, thanks to the property assessor's office having adequate money to enforce most of our recently increased property values. But like Ms. Means said, the county website is outdated, inadequate, at best. You citizens are the means of accountability for these men and women that we voted for to serve our county. But you have to be present, much like a parent, to hold them accountable. Any other meeting? This ring is nearly empty. The votes and the spending are business as usual. It's been quite lonely here, and I'm glad to finally have some company tonight. These are your commissioners. Call them, email them, find them on the street, let them know our concerns. That's what they're here for. And I know that transparency and open government is sometimes cloudy in this county. But I have found, if you just ask the questions, if you just show up, the right answer will finally come to you. And these people sitting right here in front of us are trying their best, and they are in the front of us to find out what is going on in this county. And I hope that this ring is full many, many more months to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Livingston. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much for giving me a voice. Ruth Livingston, three oh four Pocahontas Trail, Piney Flat, Tennessee. Piney Flats, Tennessee.
Thank you.
A home I dearly love. I've planned to be there more than 28 years. I come before you today. Is it Mr. Ward?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ward.
Ma'am, if you would, don't call out any of the commissioners.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, if anyone's having to be on the couch, I have a perfect plan to get you off the couch and suit everybody with Kate. But we are concerned about the property assessment, which went up well over 100%. And my husband spoke with someone today, had one of those appointments, and it was declared that, oh, well, we'll lower it. We'll have, we'll lower it 10%. And I'm thinking, he actually said, "I'm not here to buy a car." So, our assessment is well above what we could possibly sell our home for. And I don't think that this was looked at systematically. I mean, a tremendous AI system, Zillow, our zestimate is $150,000 above our zestimate. A home in our neighborhood, and we can get a realtor to look at it and give us an estimate, but a home in our neighborhood just very recently, a realtor said, "You can get $1.5 million." That's what we're gonna list it for. They got 801. Big difference. So, if our assessment is, let's get people to look at it and think what could you possibly get, that's not fair market value, and we all know that those numbers keep dropping once they get listed. So, I did not hear from the woman who was saying, "How does it assess?" to talk about, "Well, we send a plane over, we take pictures, we have five people in an office who have apparently assessed every home in Sullivan County." Is that not it?
That's the board. Excuse me, sorry, I'm, let her finish.
Okay, but it just doesn't seem logistically possible to come up with these numbers fairly. And I would implore you to please, let's step back and do this right, because it is unjust for me to have an assessment, a tax assessment, for way above what I could possibly sell my home for. I'm willing to go to Zillow and that could possibly be more fair than this. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Without objection, we'll move on to non-agenda-related topics. Recognizing Gary Hooker.
My name's Gary Hooker. I live in Overeagan, 1 Hooker Road, Blount. Most of you know me. Born and raised in this county, lives here on the line of educated here in the Tennessee State of Nevada. One day last week, I went to the mailbox, and I got a stack of assistants just because I don't, I'm a hump farmer, house, garage. I don't store profits. It was like a hammer digging in the head with them. I didn't like it. It got very deep. I asked you all, Commissioner. Y'all, this burden has got to stop with you all. Y'all got to find the source of where it started, whether it was at the state level, with my own power, in this building. Somebody's got to find a reason for this. We've got to find a simple reason. We've got to find a resolution. I can't afford this. Over 50% of the people in this county are retired, live on limited income. I do. We don't have the wage base for such assessments in this county. It's nonsense. Anyway, it's up to the commissioners and this commission to look into this. And all the way to dates are wrong, my commissioners. Y'all are not the problem, but you're going to have to be the answer to the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ruth Livingston?
I've already done mine, sorry.
Okay.
I changed to the on agenda when it was on the agenda.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Victoria Hunt?
All right. I have four go.
John Diaz. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. Thank you for this time to be able to speak. My address is 315 Sepoyia Drive here in Blount. I'm 84 years old and a Navy veteran. My ex-wife. I know the heartburn that some of you had. I checked my assessment, and it only went up 243%. I've lived in the house for 19 years. I've made no improvements because I'm retired, but I still get the heartburn from the 242%. One thing I would like to bring to you and I'd like to suggest to you, the state of Tennessee, the legislature in 2007 session, 105th General Assembly, enacted the Property Tax Free Act. It establishes a tax free for people 65 years and older. Sullivan County has not enacted that, and I would encourage you as a resolution to please look at that for tax relief for people 65 years and older, and I've been thanking you for this time.
Thank you very much, sir. That completes my list. Before I'm closed, is there anyone else who would like to sign up?
Before I, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I read this, going back to the educators that was recognized tonight, Ms. Cheryl White, are you still here? Would you stand up, please?
I have to. I can stand up in front of students.
I went to school with this young lady, and she is a member of our Chincopin community. And you all just don't realize what she has done for the children in that area and the parents and the church. And I want to personally say thank you for what you've done for our community out there and the community that I know that's more deserving than you all.
I appreciate it, but I'm one of the last, and I'm retiring.
You've done, you've done a good job. Second one, I want to recognize the high school teacher of the year, Mr. Harrison. Would you stand up, please? Mr. Harrison is a Spanish teacher at least, and our granddaughter, Michaela Webb, thinks that he is, I mean, beyond wonderful and special. This man and a group of kids up there has raised money every single year to go on a Spanish trip, and they have worked their butts off to raise this money with pancakes, sales, and all kinds of other things on Saturdays and meetings, and it's unreal what he's done for those young kids up there. And Michaela is a sophomore at ETSU, and she was going to be a travel nurse, but I think Mr. Harrison's going to talk to her and maybe in Spanish. But thank you again for what you've done for those kids and the enthusiasm that they have about Spanish and mixed schools.
Thank you.
Thank you all of you for your attention. Mr. Chairman, I have a letter here, and this letter was provided to me by a family in our community that couldn't be here to speak tonight at public comment. I have copies for the clerk and the attorney. It says, "Dear Hersh, our property assessment has increased by 82%. This is the first time in the 43 years that I have lived and worked in Sullivan County. The assessment is at the high end of the market. Property values have been inflated by people flooding into this market from blue states with cash to pay whatever is asked. This is an abnormal market as a result. The average home sale in Sullivan County, according to Zillow, is 242,640 as of March 2025, with a median cost of square foot of $159. The typical market value in the county is $121,000 with the average value at $175.5 based on the March average. $40,000 for the lot and a $1.59 square foot value on the house, or excuse me, $159 value on the house, and an average home is 1,274 square foot. The average household income in Sullivan County is $56,481 compared to the 2023 census. Estimated household income now is $72,115, and that is U.S. population. Based on estimated numbers, the average household cannot afford the average home payment on $240,000 at 6.5% for 30 years is $1,517 a month plus $300 for taxes and insurance equals $1,817 a month. This assessment has the potential to add another $150 a month to a payment given a ratio of the income of 32.7%, nearly 5% over what many lenders consider affordable. Sullivan County has now built two jails in 43 years that we have lived here. The cost of property owners to house an average of anywhere from 100 to 150 state prisoners currently, and the additional request to man and run the new jail in the 3 million range is evidence of reckless spending and management. These increases have an enormous negative effect on farmers, businessmen, and landowners and homeowners. The assessment should be more in line with the typical numbers. Maybe we could get Doge, look for the ways in the county's system. Sincerely, Mike and Kim Blevins, 1737 Allison Road, Piney Flats, Tennessee. Mr. Mike Blevins retired from Farm Credit with probably over
25 years?
Probably 30. Probably 30 to 32 years as a loan officer for Farm Credit. And this man knows what he's talking about. Very smart individual, wife very smart, lady used to be in the school system. And he presented this to me there the other day to read because he couldn't be here and Kim couldn't be here. They had a prior engagement, but they were very concerned. And when I sit here and read what he just said, when I saw all these kids and so forth coming forward, look at that seal hanging on the wall up there. And when you look at that seal hanging up there, right dead center in the middle of that seal, what's it say? Agricultural. If we keep going down the path that we're going, that'll be in the past. If we keep doing what we're doing, that'll be in the past. So, we need like that, in the front row, we better be finding a solution, because if we don't, we will have to redo that seal because we'll be taking agricultural life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Glover. You can provide her a copy. Without objection, the public comment portion of the agenda is closed. Next order is resolutions on consent. On the consent calendar, we have resolutions 3, 6, 7, 8, and 9. Does anyone wish to bump any one of those resolutions off the consent calendar? Or if any resolutions on the agenda you wish to add to the consent calendar? Is there any motion on the consent calendar? Commissioner Calton moves adoption of the consent calendar. Is there a second? Any further discussion on the consent calendar? Requires unanimous passage. Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on the consent calendar. The gardener votes yes. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two yes, two absent.
Having received unanimous consent, the consent calendar is approved. Without objection, recognize, under old business, Commissioner Harvey on item number one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution creates a capped amount of $200,000 to be used to support selected nonprofits in our county, which thoroughly vetted or believed to provide valuable services to many of our citizens in Sullivan County. This limited funding should be considered as investments in selected nonprofits which clearly benefit the health and well-being of many citizens in our county and which serve to support and actually save money for many of our county's essential services, including our schools, our courts, and our law enforcement. The capped amount of $200,000 is nearly a quarter of a million dollars less than the budgeted amount approved by this commission for nonprofits two years ago, and it is $100,000 less than the $300,000 that was approved for nonprofits in last year's budget. The proposed $200,000 represents less than 1%, that is only .008% of the county's total budget. This resolution assures that nonprofit applications will be individually and thoroughly vetted to meet established criteria for supporting our county's essential services and will not support nonprofits which separate out individuals or groups with programs which do not align with the county's criteria for funding. Once the '25-'26 budget is approved by the full commission and on or after July 1st, the committee charged with managing the nonprofit budget will have plenty of time to send out notifications to nonprofits via a letter, or information may be posted online regarding the application process and timeline. The full commission will not have to take their time to listen to any individual funding requests, as this task will be handled by a committee assigned to manage this budget and make collective recommendations to the full commission for approval.
You've heard the explanation on item number one. The floor is open for discussion. Anyone seek recognition? Commissioner Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the bottom of the first page of this resolution or packet, "And further be resolved funding to fire departments, emergency medical response agencies throughout the county." to volunteer fire departments, emergency medical response agencies, South County will continue to be funded outside the special process. If you could please strike the word volunteer because there are fire department entities that are not volunteer that are funded through this within the cities, would that be acceptable?
Commissioner Harvey.
Volunteer fire departments are nonprofits.
But they are listed in that same funding process.
Recognize Commissioner Harvey, you can respond to Commissioner Cross, then I will recognize Commissioner Murray.
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you. So amended?
You accept his recommendation? If you can state that just once more for the...
Simply to strike the word volunteer from that last paragraph. So it says, "And further be resolved funding to fire departments and emergency medical response agencies throughout the county." Simply striking one mark. Thank you.
Commissioner Harvey, you're acceptable to that?
Yes, that's fine.
Commissioner Murray, then Commissioner Locke.
Yeah, I just had a brief question. Will this cap all of our funding to nonprofits? So this will not only provide the funding for it, but it's going to provide a cap for this is all the money that we have. Correct?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Murray. Commissioner Locke.
Did you amend the resolution from our session to go ahead and send out notices to the nonprofits so we can hear their requests back? And then, when the requests come back, what committee's going to be hearing? Is it administrative committee or is it going to go directly to the budget committee? Because we've got nonprofits right now going to the budget committee because administrative committee's already heard some of the nonprofits.
Yes, the way this resolution works is that if the amount of money, the cap of two hundred thousand, will be placed in the budget immediately, and then, once the full commission has approved the budget, then the applications can go out, either via a letter or online, we can ask for those. So there's no rush. This is just going ahead and establishing the amount that will be in the budget.
Now, what committee's going to be hearing the request that's coming back in?
Commissioner Harvey.
I didn't hear that.
What committees are going to be hearing these requests when they're coming back in?
So, I just put a committee, and that could be a special formed committee, or it could go back to the administrative committee.
I don't think we need to form another committee. We have too many committees the way it is. So does it need to go directly back to the administrative committee or does it need to go to the budget committee?
Well, the process is that it goes to administrative committee now and then goes to the budget.
Can you amend the resolution to the administrative committee on the resolution?
Commissioner Harvey. However you wish to respond to that.
I just, it indicates in there a committee. I can have administrative committee, but that...
Do you accept that amendment?
That's fine.
Okay. And then, do you accept upon passage Larry Bailey's office sends out forms to the nonprofits to fill out so we're not behind in the catch and date?
We don't need to do that until we know whether or not this budget amount is there. It will go into the budget, so we don't need to specify which ones.
If we're voting on this tonight, after the two hundred grand, the money's there, Larry's office needs to go ahead and mail out letters to let people know to request monies for the nonprofits.
Yeah, there's no rush to do that because the finance department will have the amount. If this is approved, it'll go into the budget, and there's no timetable for that. Once it's approved by the full commission, then we can send those out and take as much time as we need to review them.
Larry sends the notices out. Larry needs to be able to tell his team to put this notice out. He's not going to do it until this is put in the resolution.
Right, the way the resolution is written, we don't have to do that. It just will put the set amount into the budget.
Commissioner Harvey. Anyone else seek recognition? Commissioner Pierce.
I would like to make an amendment to the resolution that thirty-five thousand of that two hundred will go to the base mountain park.
Commissioner Harvey.
Yeah, I'm not going to accept that because we're not doing any specifics. It's just setting a capped amount of two hundred thousand dollars. And then, after the commission approves the budget, then those information will come in on the nonprofits that are requesting funding, and the administrative committee will review those and then take them to the budget committee and then to the full commission for approval. They certainly can apply for that.
Commissioner Calton.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Harvey, I would think although we have two hundred thousand, that would be put into the general fund for nonprofit if this resolution passes, but we still need to know when these people can apply or when applications go out. So, you don't have any particular time, but do you want to do that?
I did not specify that in this resolution because I'm just trying to find if there's a funding, support for the funding, and if there's support for the funding, then all of that can be handled. Finances will have what they need for the budget, and then, after it's approved by the full commission, then the committee will have a chance to send out the applications, put it online, however to get those in, and review them, the same process, and go through the budget committee and then to the full commission.
So, you're saying if it's approved, then they can go ahead and send out the applications?
They don't have to do that.
Well, when would they know to do it?
I mean, it would be all right for them to do that, but they don't have to do that because it's a set amount, and then we have until, as long as we need to respond to that. So, there's no time limit on it because of that, the way this is written.
So, are you going to let him know when we start sending those applications out that they is approved? Who's going to determine that?
Well, the administrative committee, if we put that in the resolution, would be the ones that would be reviewing the resolution.
No, we're not talking about reviewing, we're talking about sending out the applications to the nonprofit that would like to be a part of this two hundred thousand dollars. And when would that be available for them to do that, or who's going to lead to do it?
You have to be recognized and called for it. You was going to answer the question.
That could, I mean, that could be done because the resolution is just to establish that there is going to be funding for nonprofits.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sligell. The question has been called for. We'll have to put the question up for vote. Is there a second to the question? Call for question by Commissioner Sligell, second by Commissioner Glover. And the way that works is we'll have to vote on the call for the question, and then if that receives thirteen votes, then we immediately go into voting on the resolution. Are we clear on that? Because the call for question has cut off all debate on the resolution. I'd like for, I will recognize Commissioner Harvey on two people that are allowed to address it. It's the person that called for the question, Sligell, and Commissioner Harvey. Recognize Commissioner Harvey to speak on the call for the question, not the resolution, whether or not, why we should, I guess from your perspective, why we should not vote and handle speaking on why we should.
Yeah, the last thing I just want to say is this really comes down to a principal vote. A no vote means you choose to defund all five O C three nonprofits in Sullivan County using county funding, excluding fire and rescue.
Commissioner Harvey. Speaking on the motion for the call, I recognize Commissioner Sligell because you made the motion to call for question, and it cuts off all debate except for the two. I have my motion. Commissioner Sligell renews his motion for the call for question. Remember, if you vote yes, you're voting to go straight into the vote on the next round of voting. When the board opens, please cast your vote on the call for question. Or we can do that by roll call. This is going to be a roll call. We're voting on the call for question.
Aker.
Commissioner Harvey has appointed order.
Yeah, I wanted to make another comment before we vote, if I may.
We're not voting on the resolution. We're voting on the call for question. I'll navigate it as we go.
Aker. Calton, yes. Carr.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Crawford.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Crosslyte, yes. Gardner.
No.
Glover.
Yes.
Harvey.
No.
Hayes.
Horn.
Yes.
Irison.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Leonard.
Yes.
Locke.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes.
Means.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Sligell.
Yes.
Stidham.
Yes.
Vanover.
Yes.
Ward.
Yes, ma'am.
Would anybody wish to change their vote? Two absent, twenty yes, two no.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, the call for the question is adopted. That means we go straight into the vote on item number one. Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on item... You need to make that in form of motion.
Yes, I want a roll call vote because this is a principal vote. No vote means that you choose to defund all five O one C three nonprofits.
We're just simply voting on the resolution. A yes vote, if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're not in favor, you vote no. We're going straight into the vote on item number one, and the roll call vote is in order. Number four.
Aker. Calton.
Yes.
Carr.
Yes.
Cole.
No.
Crawford.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Crosslyte.
Say.
Gardner.
Yes.
Glover.
No.
Harvey.
Yes.
Hayes.
Absent.
Horn.
No.
Irison.
No.
Jones.
Yes.
King.
No.
Leonard.
No.
Locke.
No.
McMurray.
Yes.
Means.
No.
Pierce.
Yes.
Sligell.
No.
Stidham.
Yes.
Vanover.
No.
Ward.
No.
Would anybody wish to change their vote? Ten yes, eleven no, two absent, one abstain.
Having failed to receive the necessary majority of the votes cast, item one fails. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Irison on item number two under whole business. This is the second month we've talked about this. Saw this make it very brief. This is the number that the judges and Larry Bailey's office came together with something that would actually work out for all of them. One of the requests earlier was we would take up the twenty-four and thirty-nine out of that, but Larry Bailey and the judges actually agreed to clarify that, to make sure that it's there. That way, there's no mistakes in the future. So, we're going to make sure that that's there. But I renew my motion. I'll wait. You've heard the explanation on item number two. The floor is open for discussion on item number two. Anyone seek recognition? Seeing none, sponsor moves adoption of item number two, requiring thirteen votes. This is on this second. They run together after a while. Requiring thirteen votes per passage. When the board opens, without objection, the board opens, please cast your vote on item number two. Has every member voted? Does any member wish to change their vote? Number four.
Eighteen yes, two abstain, two absent.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, item number two is adopted. It takes us to the end of the whole business. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Irison on item number three under new business. That was on consent. Commissioner Jones, you ready to take this one up? Item number four. The sponsor is Commissioner Aker, Commissioner Jones is co-sponsor. Recognize Commissioner Jones.
Yes, this comes from the purchasing department. The, because of the move, we have a need for a forklift to handle the products coming in from shipment into the different departments to load and move them around since we're in two different areas now. Move through immediate passage.
Heard the explanation on item number four. The floor is open for discussion. Anyone seeking recognition on item number four? Commissioner Jones, this is on this second reading as well, correct? Or is it on labor?
Yeah, this is for, I'm sorry, waiver of rules.
Sponsor moves waiver of rules on item number four, requiring sixteen votes per passage. When the board opens, please cast your vote on item number four. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Number four.
Twenty-one yes, three absent.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, item number four is adopted. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Vanover on item number six. Item number five. Commissioner Harvey. I've been tripping with the consent calendar, isn't I?
You ready to go for item number five?
Put this on first reading.
Sponsor minis first reading, item number five. Without objection, recognize, I think it takes us item eight? Item number ten. Recognize Commissioner Pierce on item number ten.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is to approve allocations of up to a hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty dollars from the opiate abatement trust fund to Sullivan County Insurance Office Medical Division Mental Health. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Sullivan County meeting in regular session this seventeenth day of April twenty-twenty-five, approve the allocation of up to a hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and sixty dollars to the Sullivan County Insurance Office Medical Division Mental Health to provide necessary mental health care within the Sullivan County Jail instead of relying on outside community resources, which ultimately provide major barriers to carrying or inmates account codes to be Instead of using taxpayers' money, we can use some of this to help the sheriff's office and their medical division care for some of these patients that they have. It's a continuous thing every day, dealing with mental health and drug-related issues at the jail, and this will provide for additional help in caring for these people. So I ask for waiver of re, waiver of rules, and one voting for, in the affirmative will be opposed.
You've heard the explanation on item number 10. Sponsor removes waiver of rules, requiring 16 votes per passage. The floor is open for discussion. Anyone seeking recognition? Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on item number 10, requiring 16 votes per passage. Garden vote yes. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Number.
21 yes, 3 absent.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, item number 10 is adopted. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Vanover on item number six. Oh, item number five. Commissioner Harvey. I've been driven by consent counters, haven't I? Commissioner Harvey. You're ready to answer item number five?
Put this on first reading.
Sponsor removes first reading, item number five. Without objection, recognize, I think it takes it item eight. Item number 10. Recognize Commissioner Pierce on item number 10.
Thank you, Chairman. This resolution is to approve allocations of up to $168,660 from the opiate abatement trust fund to Sullivan County Sheriff's Office Medical Division Mental Health. Now, therefore being resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Sullivan County meeting in requisition this 17th day of April 2025, approve the allocation of up to $168,660 to the Sullivan County Sheriff's Office Medical Division Mental Health to provide necessary mental health care within the Sullivan County Jail instead of relying on outside community resources which probably would provide major barriers to carrying or inmates account codes to be assigned by the Sullivan County Finance Department. I think this is a good use of the abatement money that we received through the opiate abatement fund. Instead of using taxpayers' money, we can use some of this to help the sheriff's office and their medical division care for some of these patients that they have. It's a continuous thing every day, dealing with mental health and drug-related issues at the jail, and this will provide for additional help in caring for these people. So I ask for waiver of re, waiver of rules, and one voting for, in the affirmative will be opposed.
You've heard the explanation on item number 10. Sponsor removes waiver of rules, requiring 16 votes per passage. The floor is open for discussion. Anyone seeking recognition? Without objection, when the board opens, please cast your vote on item number 10, requiring 16 votes per passage. Garden vote yes. Has every member voted? Any member wish to change their vote? Number.
21 yes, 3 absent.
Having received the necessary majority of the votes cast, item number 10 is adopted. That brings us to the end of our agenda calendar. Next order is announcements. Commissioner Locke.
Everyone would please keep Kingsport Fire Department in their prayers. They lost retired fire chief Craig Dye, passed away earlier today, and I don't know the arrangements, too early to tell, but they need your prayers and support and family. I pray God as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Jones.
For all you grandparents and parents that are in here, we will have an Easter egg night at the Sullivan County Library in Colonial Heights. Y'all will arrive around 1:00. It'll be open by 3:00. And bring your children, grandchildren, and have some fun.
Thank you. What, forgive me, what day was that again? Is that Saturday?
Saturday.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else seeking recognition? Mr. Matthew Johnson from our Archives Department.
Thank you, Commissioner Chairman. Just want to let everybody know that May 1st, first Thursday and day, will be a national service approach in front of the courthouse at 12:00. Invite you all to come.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Motion to the chairman.
Motion to the chairman by Commissioner Crawford. All in favor said aye. Those votes, stand the chairman.
See, Don Lee, I voted on New Money. You can never say that again, ever. I voted on New Money. The opiate always pays for the hard job. There you go. She blessed that glass on the day I voted on New Money. I bless you.
You know, you know, you know, everything.
Chris, Chris, Mr. Frye.
Christopher, Kevin, and Alfred, I might have been good.
Christopher's mom, my brother. I'm about 12 years older than him, so he's my baby. You know, because I was so much older, I love him.
On your way.